Almost.
Oh.
See my eyes pulled over, that's why.
Someone's gonna just need to put like a little piece of tape right on my name on it so I can remember where I'm sitting. How this puppy is. I was like, ah, yeah, maybe.
Yeah, Joe.
Good.
You can't still have a pen. I love this, I know, but I didn't think you had a pen.
I do, but I'll take any pen that's good.
Me too.
No, Doug, I met him a couple of times, so he was leaving before I.
Rockin' woo.
Get ready over there. All right, let's go ahead and get started. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like at this time to call our April 2022 Planning Commission meeting to order. Jessica, can you give us a roll call, please?
Phil Chancellor.
Here.
Nonette Reese.
Here.
Robin Bridges.
Here.
Warren McCord.
Here.
Bob Brittenbach.
Here.
Wendy Birmingham.
Here.
Marcus Marshall.
Here.
Joseph Ostrom.
Here.
Jana Jager.
Here.
Thank you. Before we start, I just wanted to give a couple of rules of the road so everybody kind of understands how we proceed here. Makes it a little bit easier as we go on. The Planning Commission's going to be presented with agenda items by the planning staff. And then after that presentation, the representative for the agenda item has the option to make comments that they would like to at that time. And then if there's a public hearing required, which most of these tonight do require public hearings, I'll open the public hearing. And that's going to be your opportunity to come forward and speak on the issue at hand. We'd like to get you to keep your time to five minutes or less, and please keep your comments relevant to the case at hand. After everyone has spoken, I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll ask some questions maybe for clarification, and then we'll have a vote. A motions and a vote, and some discussion between the motion and the vote. And we're going to be making our, we base our votes on state and local laws. The city's Comprehensive Plan 2030 and for the general good of the community. Additionally, besides those basic items that we're going to be covering, we do have a special role with subdivision plats. By Alabama statute, the municipal planning commission such as ours is the final approval authority for these subdivision plants. So with regard to those, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by limitations contained in state laws. The city zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations that this body has approved in the past. There are public hearings on most plats, and we welcome all comments that you might want to, you come forward and speak, five minute time limit again. But we want you to recognize that the commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds specific requirements codified in laws. Then finally, we have, I just want to make a point that other than subdivision plats, which we are the final authority, everything else is a recommendation to the city council. So any of these things that we've discussed at this point in time, there's another chance that's one that gets brought up at the city council. So the first item of business is citizens communication. And you're allowed, you can come forward and speak on two different, there's two different categories at this time. One is anything on the consent agenda. So if you're interested in speaking on the consent agenda, that's a time to talk. And also anything that's not on the agenda at all, like it's not even here. So if you have anything you'd like to speak about at this time, consent agenda or something else on your mind, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any staff comments on consent? We went over, just a couple of annexations dealt with them at Packet pretty well, I think.
I don't believe there are any additional comments. Thank you.
Motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda, including the approval of the minutes.
They have a motion and a second, all those, is there any discussion? Okay, a second and a motion, a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. There are none. Consent agenda passes, and we're on to new business. The first item of business is a preliminary plat for Longleaf Crossing Phase 5C. This is PP 2022-004. Ms. English?
Yes, sir. Good evening. As you said, preliminary plat approval. This is Longleaf Crossing Phase 5C. It's going to be a request for an eight lot townhouse subdivision on Downs Way and Logan Court. Here's the aerial. It'll show the properties at the southern boundary of Downs Way. Prox map showing the zoning is in the CDD zoning district with a PDD overlay with CDD zoning to the south. Here is the proposed plat with the eight lots here. Here's tonight's Rorschach test, also known as the master development plan. And one of the conditions of approval is that we will require a new, an updated master development plan for the rest of the property. And the plat meets the requirements of the subregs and staff recommends approval.
Hey, would the representative like to speak at this time?
Brett Vasquen with the Forsight Group representing the applicant. In regards to the conditions, it says staff recommendations. I talked with Steve and understand that those are staff recommended conditions of approval. So if you approve it with staff recommendations, those requirements are required to be provided as part of the conditional use.
Correct.
So I would say, you know, we have resubmitted our plans showing the townhomes. The rear alley access, we would ask that that not be a requirement. We are not fronting on two streets. So we would like to have the ability to access the parcels from the front. And then I think, you know, the master development plan, I think we're fine updating the master development plan for the remaining property. I don't see a need for us to update for what's already been done. So we're fine doing that and agree to that. But we'd just ask that we can just meet normal requirements and have the flexibility on the type of access we are using to access those lots. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and, this requires a public hearing, so anybody would like to come speak on this item, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion or some questions for clarification.
I got a question. Mr. Vasquen said that one of the problems they had with that requirement or that is set by the city, that recommended by the city, is that it's because they were accessing from two streets. I'm not sure how that's an impediment.
I think you said they weren't fronting on two streets.
Weren't fronting on two streets.
That's what I heard.
Okay, we're not fronting on two streets. All right, why is that a problem?
Sorry, who are you asking the question to?
Ask the question, yes. Why is, why is not fronting on two streets causing the problem? Because you've got Logan Court there.
I think it was about access from the rear. He didn't want to be stuck with the access and then hear this.
That's right, and my question is, the reason for that was that it did not. Why is that now? Why is that a problem?
So the comment's coming from planning, it's not coming from engineering, right? So the corner units on a, on a corner unit like this, access has to be come from the side street, okay?
Yeah.
For the corner units. But the other units do not have to take access off the side street. They can take access off the street in front. Okay?
Yeah, they can.
They can.
They can.
Correct. So we would prefer to take access off the front so that we can have a true backyard, right? If we do rear alley access, then we have no backyard. We essentially have a driveway on the back.
Okay.
And that on the front, and it kind of goes back to some of the conversations we've had where y'all were worried about townhomes, how they face the street. Are you seeing the back of the house or the front of the house? You know what I mean? In this particular situation, if we do what we're saying, we're essentially putting in what's telling us you don't want. You don't want to see the back of the house. You don't want to see the back and have a true backyard. So that's what we're trying to maintain, is having a true backyard. If you have rear alley access on a townhome, you have no yard, right? Because your sides are walls, you know, of your adjacent users. So we're just wanting that flexibility to be able to have it off the front.
Thanks.
And Mr. Chairman, while it is in the planning conditions, it does say is recommended. And then if, if engineering wants to make any additional comments in response to this.
Yeah, I wasn't tracking on which comment.
I think he's talking about number one.
Number one?
Yeah. Planning condition number one, so it's rear access, each of the units from Logan Court is recommended. So it'd be up to your pleasure as far as leaving that in or changing it. You're free to do that.
All right, we have a motion.
Chairman, I move that Longleaf Crossing PH 5C preliminary plat be approved, subject to all comments and requirements of the city staff, except the item one of planning.
Just remove that altogether, okay? Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay. Item number four, conditional use, Chipotle remodel, CU 2022-007. Mr. Foot, I believe.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this request, as you mentioned, is another conditional use. It is for a Chipotle remodel. This is an existing restaurant in town. If we can forward the slides to the appropriate place, that'd be appreciated. Thank you. And so on West Magnolia, and you can see the site there on the aerial. So the request is for approval of a road service use, which is a fast food restaurant. And there is an existing restaurant there, there's an existing Chipotle. They do not have a drive-through facility. So what they'd like to do is put in what, in a sense, amounts to a drive-through facility, but it does not have an ordering board or a menu board, okay? So it's only for online ordering, if you will, from your phone, for instance, something like that. Where you place your order on your phone, then you come by and you go through and you just pick it up at the window. So that's the proposal. I believe that that would be in many ways different from a traditional drive-through where people don't have to pull up and try to figure out what they want. And sometimes that does take a little more time, can slow down the processing of the orders and things of that nature. So from that standpoint, they are showing the number of car stacking spaces that would be required. And there is a minor expansion of the building that goes along with this. There's a, the next slide, I believe, shows a expansion there on the left side of the building as you face it from the street. And that would provide for a window for servicing, again, patrons that are going through the drive-through. So now there are some comments we talked about on the expansion. It's shown currently as a metal facade, which is not allowed per our regulations. We've spoken with the applicant, and they've indicated that rather than request the waiver, that they would change the material to an acceptable material such as brick. We don't have revised plans yet, but we'll enforce that when it comes through for DRT. So it doesn't appear to be a problem at this point in time. So staff is recommending approval with the conditions that are in your report. And I would just also state that under Planning Commission recommendations, there are four conditions that are in your report. I'd like to make some minor changes. For number three, that was a discussion that we were having with the applicant when we first looked at some of the construction plans. It was obvious that the new addition was going to be higher than the old existing portion of the building. And we weren't sure if they were extending that parapet around the full, you know, 360 degrees of the building or not. At this point in time, I'm not sure that they are, but it's not a requirement in our code per se, so they're not affecting that portion of the building either. So I think at this point, it would be appropriate to go ahead and delete condition recommended as number three. Okay, and then on number four, just wanted to point out for the record that the recommendation there in number four, I think it's important because should Chipotle or another restaurant that might be occupying this space ever decide that they want to have a traditional drive-through and put in a menu board, they can't just do that. They'll have to come back and go through the process that we're going through right now tonight. And that'll give us an opportunity to look at it in good detail again and make sure that it makes sense. So that's the reason for that, and that would conclude my presentation on this. Thank you.
Was there a, just a real quick question. Was there actually a waiver in here for the cladding?
There was, but they're going to fix it. So they're going to provide bricks, so they would not need the waiver approved by you.
All right.
Are we using existing curb cuts, I suppose, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would the applicant like to have something to say? Come on.
Hello, council members. I'm just serving on behalf of Chipotle to answer any questions that you guys might have today. Just for clarity, as was mentioned, this is a pickup lane. So it just helps provide the convenience to guests of not having to sit in line, wait for an order. But they can place that order in line and pick it up at the pickup window. It's shown to be a great asset to the company, to our guests, and especially as we just have survived the past couple of years of the pandemic. Has really made a huge impact to the community, to the guests. So it's an expansion to the current building, as he had mentioned, extends it out so that we're not making any major adjustments to the building. So we know that can be very cost effective. And also when we're dealing with the amount of equipment, gas lines, it's much more effective to just do the add-on rather than relocate to a new area. So any questions that anyone has, I am more than happy to answer today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this requires a public hearing. This time, anybody would like to come speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Ask for any questions for clarification or a motion.
I have a comment. I feel like as time continues to go on, we will have more of this pickup window situation. And it might behoove us to have that terminology maybe as part of our descriptions so that people know that it is very different, I feel like, than a drive-through with a menu ordering board. So the correspondence that we received today, I feel like maybe if he had understood, that particular individual had understood what was going on, he might have had an objection. So just something to think about.
And thank you. I'm sorry, I did have that printed out, and I meant to mention that to you in case you all didn't see that email you received today from an individual who was concerned about the drive-through in this area. So there was one person.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'd like to move to approve CU 2022-007 with recommendations for approval and removal of the third comment from planning about decorative corners.
Second.
They have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I would like to have a little bit of discussion. How many road services do we have on that stretch of Magnolia designated specifically as road service? Any idea?
I do not know.
Chick-fil-A, I believe, would be a road service because it's got a drive-through.
He's asking how many road service uses, I think, do we have on that stretch of West Magnolia?
We're changing from a restaurant to a road service on a busy, you know, surface street.
There's McDonald's.
McDonald's.
McDonald's is another one.
Chick-fil-A, those are the only two, right?
I think there's one more restaurant on the outside.
Subway.
That's a restaurant.
That's the restaurant, yeah.
Yeah.
I've kind of beat the same drum for many years now where, you know, if we're trying to move towards urban development, you know, we want to see some urban form on this, and this looks like the regular form in my personal opinion. And it's just, has the potential of stacking up and causing trouble that we've had there in the past. Now, I get that it's a little bit different from the standpoint that it's a mobile ordering, you know, and I suspect that could help. But I'm still of the mind that we want, I believe in the urban environment, want people out of the cars. So, you know, I'm not going to be in favor of this particular item.
Just a, just a comment. If it had been a new build, something of that nature, we probably would have looked at it a little more strictly. And the fact that it's a Chipotle as opposed to maybe a McDonald's or something of that nature, where I think the traffic in the drive-through is much more extreme. And again, the fact that it's maybe just a pickup is kind of how staff looked at it. Just clarification.
And it hasn't been mentioned, but I see this as being used by DoorDash, Grubhub, those type of delivery services, which is, which came maybe because of the pandemic, but they're going to be here to stay. You don't even have to get in your car. You don't even have to put any clothes on to have a Chipotle. Well, I mean, your pajamas.
I wouldn't know anything about that.
But I do think that it is different, and I understand our concern, we want to get people out of the cars and that sort of thing. Although we have dealt with this over and over, people are not going to get out of their cars. It was. And so the, with the, the pickup is altogether different, I think, than a drive-through with a squat box, and you wait while they have to assemble your food. I think this, this is not going to have the same effect as a drive-through.
Further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. No. Let's have a, a call real quick.
Robin Bridges.
Yes.
Phil Chancellor.
No.
Jana Jager.
Yes.
Marcus Marshall.
Yes.
Warren McCord.
Yes.
Nonette Reese.
Yes.
Bob Brittenbach.
Yes.
Wendy Birmingham.
Yes.
Joseph Ostrom.
No.
Okay, motion carries. Onto item number five, Auburn Distribution Facility, CU 2022-008. Mr. Foot? Or not?
No.
Yes, it is me.
Do you want to talk?
Yeah, let me make the presentation first, then he'll open it up for additional comments. Thank you. Sorry, I was just getting my thoughts together. Uh, let's see, so this, as you mentioned, is another conditional use. This one is the Auburn Distribution Facility. So this is located at 511 West Veterans Boulevard. You can see it on the site there on the aerial. The bottom backs up to some wetlands and then to I-85. A large frontage on West Veterans, and it's just to the west end of sort of all that undeveloped land there. And right before you get into the city's tech park. And so this proposal is a distribution facility. It's a commercial support use. In addition to, let me mention the use first. So we're talking about a structure here with various bays. It's 24,000 plus square feet with 18 dock shelters. You can see on the, on the screen there on your plan. You've got the building on the right-hand side. You've got truck bays that would be on the left side of it. A maneuvering area there in the middle, and then additional parking on the left side. There are some road improvements that would be anticipated, as you can see there on West Veterans. And then parking lot toward the south end for more along the lines of customers and, you know, traditional vehicles. So that is the site in just an abbreviated view, if you will. It will have a security fence around the property. It'll have a security gate. And also, we are talking about a property that's just under 15 acres. And at this point in time, they anticipate 25 to 35 distribution trucks that would be functioning in and out of that facility at this time. Now, the report does make mention of 24-hour day service and that at this time that they're not anticipating that. But I think they very much want to keep that open, so we're not intending through any approval or recommendation that you make that would limit them in the number of hours that they can operate. So we'd anticipate them going toward a 24-hour service possibility, if you will.
Thank you.
Let's see, now there are two waivers also associated with this request. And so one is the, the building itself. So as proposed, the building is consistent of a metal facade. Metal is restricted in the use that you can have for a corridor. This is on a corridor. And so first request for you is for the waiver to allow this type of material. And there's a different view of it, different times of day. And then the other waiver is a request to have a vinyl coated chain link fence, which would be eight feet in height. And that's part of the security fence that we're talking about. It is not proposed up at the street, but it is pushed back a ways. And they will have a 15-foot buffer, I believe, along Veterans Boulevard. And so there's room there for the possibility of either preserving some vegetation or planting vegetation there that would, I think, certainly soften the view of the fence and the view of the material on the building as well. So we'll work with the applicant to try to make sure that that's done in an appropriate manner. So those are the two waivers.
We talked a little bit in Packet about two waivers related to the fence. It's just, is it the?
It's the height and the location forward of the building. My apologies. Yes, sir. So you've got the material and the height, and then also the fact that it's forward of the front of the building. So it's basically more or less like the front yard. Appreciate you asking that question. Thank you.
Okay.
So with that, staff's recommendation is for approval. Forwarding, of course, a recommendation to the city council for approval with conditions. The conditions in your report, there's really just one. And, and that says, with the exception of the two waivers to the corridor overlay regulations, if approved, the remainder of these regulations shall apply. It talks about construction will comply with 42907 of the zoning ordinance. And so with that one condition, our recommendation is to forward with approval. Thank you.
Okay, sir.
Now go. I'm sorry, that was a perfect presentation. Good evening. My name is Chris C O C. I am with Design Group, the engineers and architects that will be integral in this, in this building. So I wanted to thank staff review, the presentation, and with the understanding that we did want the 24/7 operation just because of the future and everything else with the interstate and those kind of things. So ultimately, we're here to answer questions, but it was a, but the waivers have been requested. We'll be glad to discuss those as well for reasons, and we're here to answer them.
Sounds good. Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this requires a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. And we would like to come and speak on this item. Please come forward. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Questions for clarification or a motion?
Are we pulling the two waivers to be separate or voting on it all at once?
Yes, that's going to be part of, you know, some discussion. We could handle it a number of different ways. We can do them all at once. As long as there's no objections to that.
All right, I was going to make a motion. Go ahead. I move to approve CU 2022-008. I move to approve CU 2022-008 with the condition and also with the, including the approval of the two requested waivers. Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion. I guess I'm, I would like to kind of get a little more understanding of why cladding waivers sounded like a good idea in this particular corridor and not others.
Well, I think mostly it's probably the context of where it is. I know it's, the reason the waiver is needed is because of the zoning, of course, and if you, if you go another 100 feet or so to the west, you're into a different zoning district and into the tech park. I don't know the history of, you know, the zoning and how it was applied.
In that case, would that be allowed?
Yes. Yes, it would be allowed.
That's not a corridor at that point.
Still a corridor, but I think the industrial zoning would, would not apply then. So one of the things that staff talked about, and this is why they've added the buffers, I think, to the plan, is we thought with the, the location next to the tech park, with the additional buffers and some of the vegetative materials that would be either preserved or planted along West Veterans, that that would certainly help to soften or make less obvious the materials that are in there as well as the waiver for the fencing. And so, you do have, I think it says limited disturbance there on the right-hand side of that back corner of the building. Is that right? I think it does. And so, what we'd ask the applicant to do was could they actually identify, you know, how much of this site do they need to go out and clear and, you know, exposed, if you will, from the road? And so, with that whole right-hand side there being preserved, I think it'd be somewhat difficult to, as you're driving by, sort of stare when you have the opportunity to see a good visibility of, of what the material is. And plus, the building is back, I think it was 90, 100 feet, something of that nature from the road. So those were some of the considerations.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, the next item is number six. This is a conditional use for the tavern, CU 2022-009. Staff recommend, recommends denial.
This is a conditional use request for commercial and entertainment use, specifically a lounge at 307 North College. The property is .72 acres, and it is located immediately north of the railroad tracks. It is an existing building with parking that has been used historically as a restaurant, from what I hear, more than one. The property has access from North College and Warrior, and it is in the corridor redevelopment west. And there's a close-up of that zoning district. The land use plan has this designated as mixed-use two, which calls this area a transition from the downtown area to suburbia, which is why staff recommended denial, because it does not conform to the land use plan, which calls for low-intensity uses like offices. To the east, there's a restaurant, and there's retail, and then to the west is single-family and apartment buildings. We did receive one call that is opposed to the lounge use from someone who lives north of the property.
All right.
They will be selling some food, just not enough food to make it a restaurant use.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I add a comment before we open up the public hearing? One of the other things, and if, if it was mentioned, I apologize, but we have, as you can see on the aerial right there, you've got the railroad track that, you know, if, sometimes when you're looking for, where do you draw the line with certain types of land uses, you know? You rarely get a better line in a railroad track that, you know, can say, well, why don't we make the break here where restaurants might be on the north side in this location as you get closer to the residential neighborhoods, and restrict bars and other types of things that might be more intensive uses from either a noise standpoint and things that can have impacts on those neighborhoods. So, so we looked at that train track as well as something that entered into our discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, this requires a public hearing. Anybody would like to come forward to speak on this at the time? Please come forward. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Any questions for clarification or motion?
Well, I can make a motion. We read the motion. I move that the conditional use request for the tavern, CU 2022-009, to allow a commercial entertainment use, a lounge, be denied or be recommended for denial.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? Yes, do we have a representative, by chance? Is there, you have anything you'd like to say? We're in the middle of motion.
I'm sorry, I just didn't forget my opportunity.
Okay.
So we are finding we're doing more than just a little food. We do have a full-blown menu that we do find we're doing.
Okay.
And it's possible we're just being improved and hamburgers sandwiches.
Right, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion in a second for denial for this request. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Okay, motion carries. Recommend denial to the City Council. Okay. So the next item is item number seven, conditional use, East Glen Bank, CU 2022-010, Ms. Shepherd.
This is another conditional use request for a bank with a drive-through at 1901 East Glen Avenue. A bank itself would be allowed in this district, but because it has a drive-through, that would make it need a conditional use. The property is undeveloped, and it is 1.35 acres. All around this property is CDD, including north, south, east, and west. Some of these include medical, office, retail, and then a church on the other side of East Glen to the west. The future land use plan designates this as Gateway Corridor. As you can see, everything is CDD around there. This is the site plan, if you're able to see it. It does meet all of our requirements, but it will still go through DRT. But the parking and the landscaping and all that does meet our, our requirements. It'll be approximately 14,000 square feet, two stories with a patio. The drive-through area is located on the west side, and they have access from an existing curb cut and driveway, and they have provided that private access agreement. Staff recommends approval. This use is similar to the surrounding uses and does conform with the land use plan, the zoning, and the area.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Basquen?
I have to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. This requires a public hearing. Anybody would like to come speak at this, on this item at this time? Please come forward. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Question or motion?
I move to approve CU 2022-010. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I thought you were going to say something, sorry.
No, I just, second per second. Simultaneous second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, next item, West Shore Multifamily, conditional use, CU 2022-011, Ms. English.
Yes, exciting. This is conditional use for a performance residential development, a multiple-unit development at 2240 East University Drive. Here's the aerial for the property. It is two, oops, two parcels that will need to be consolidated to form the development site. To the west here is the vintage mixed-use commercial development that's under construction. The Prox Map here will show that the majority of zoning in the area is CDD. There is some CRDS over to the east, and the University Gardens subdivision to the south. The site plan here is going to show that they're proposing 32 units and seven buildings, a mixture of one and two-story units, and a total of 96 bedrooms. The applicant has requested waivers to our special development standards. The first being that the requirement is a minimum of 50% of buildings shall have a front entrance facing a public or private street. And as this plan shows, only Building 5 here faces East University Drive. And then their second request for a waiver to the special development standards is the requirement that all buildings with a street facade shall have one functioning entry on that street facade. And as this plan shows, only Buildings 1 and 7 meet this standard. No. Just one. I'm sorry. So, staff supports a waiver to the first standard as long as the applicant will agree to place a functioning entry on the southern ends of Buildings 1 and 7, which will then negate the need for the second waiver, if that's not confusing. We received no correspondence for this, and staff recommends forwarding the request to City Council with a recommendation for approval with conditions.
I guess I'm, I'm still kind of having a little bit of a problem with the different, the waivers in, from the standpoint that, I need some more detail.
Sure.
Because it's, you know, it, it sounds like if we don't, we approve the second one, we don't have to approve the first one.
If you approve the first.
Or vice versa.
The second is not needed. Because then you will be approving a waiver to the standard that 50% of the buildings that have, have a front entrance on the public street, that will still need to be a waiver. But then requiring the entries on the southern ends of 1 and 7 would negate the need for the waiver for the functioning entry on the street.
Because we'd be, because they would have a function, a functioning entry on the street.
That's why I'm not quite sure why we even have a second waiver.
So basically, we're talking about two, just two units with a front door?
Yes.
Well, it'll end up being, it'll end up being three, right?
Three of the seven buildings would have?
It'd be 7, 5, and 1.
Yes, Building 5 already has the entrances onto the street. And so, 1 and 7 would, we would like to see the entries on the southern side of those buildings as well.
Can you explain to me what qualifies as a functioning entry? Does that mean putting a door on the side, or does that mean?
Or just looking like it has a door? The normal front door that would be used to enter and exit the, you know, the building, or that unit.
And assuming it's functioning?
Yes.
And would they be allowed to also have a door at, at the parking?
I'm sorry, say again?
Would they also be allowed to have another door at the parking?
I don't see why not, as long as they're both functioning.
I doubt the regulation addresses that, but it needs to be a fully functioning door.
No murals.
No murals. No painted-on doors, that's right. There isn't anything that says you can't have a second door.
So then that kind of brings me to the, you know, the, how do we, how do we proceed? Because it sounds like the second one's not, it's kind of moot.
If you do approve the first one, yes.
Yeah, so, so the first one, you only have one building today that faces the private-public street, one out of seven. You're supposed to have at least 50%, so you'd need four. So if they were to provide a functioning door on Building 1 and 7 facing the road, then you would have three out of seven, so you'd still need a waiver to have three instead of four. But then they would not need the second waiver, because they would now have doors on the facades facing the public street.
That's better. I understand that a little better.
Normally, I wouldn't want to know or care to know what the elevations were or how these things looked, because we're dealing with a use, you know, a conditional use. However, since we're talking about waivers regarding facing the streets, my question is to, is, are these units going to be? We have a number of units that were built in the 70s and even 60s where actually they're, they're balconies, all the one, I don't know what you call it, balcony, but all of them are open, like stacked bunkhouses, if you will. I don't mean to be derogatory, but the bottom line is, will eat, what will the facades on these buildings that are fa, that, that are not facing the street or facing the street appear like?
We have not received elevations. I believe the applicant is working on those, and I know Brett has a presentation that he brought to.
But would the upstairs units have their own door to the outside? Is that what, I guess is what I'm saying, out to a balcony that comes down a set of stairs at the end of the building?
They're, they're single units in a row. They're not vertical units.
Okay, so they're single units in a row, so all of them will be accessing from the ground floor?
Mm-hmm.
The doors. Okay.
Yes.
The end units are single-story units. Interior units is a, is a two-story unit.
Okay, but the units, in other words, there's no second-floor units that you have to go, okay, that, that.
Not an individual unit that would be a second-floor entry, no.
Another relevant question is, what's the width of this space setback from the East University Drive? It looks fairly.
Thought it was at least 100 feet.
The 100.
I believe that's what we talked about.
100 feet, I couldn't tell fully. Pardon?
More than 100 feet, you said.
Oh, more than 100 feet.
Oh, yeah. Let's have, let's have Mr. Basquen.
That makes me, okay, that.
Be a little more.
All right, Brett Basquen with the Forside Group, representing applicants. Amber's going to load some photos. It'll have some elevations and stuff. To answer your first question, right, Building, Building 1, right, so the one furthest to the west, the front of that building is 150 feet off of the road. Building 7, which is your furthest east-most unit, is 214 feet off the road. So when you're looking at this project, we have 100-foot transmission easement separating East University from the front of these units. So there's 100-foot of easement there. And, you know, to the west of us is the new, is the new office building and stuff over there that has some challenging grades. And, and I'll show you some of those pictures. To the east of us, okay, is wetlands, floodplains, and streams. Okay, so when we have this overall parcel here with the transmission easement on the front, there's really, you know, we're essentially trying to salvage some kind of use out of this piece of property, okay? The picture you see on your screen right now kind of shows, those are the end units that are single-story units, right? All the living spaces on the first floor. The middle units have the living space, have, have the bedrooms on the second floor and the first floor space. These units are essentially the same footprint of what you see in the Gardens of Gatewood development over there off of, near Lee Scott, okay? So they're, they're similar to that. So the special development standard that we're up against here is, is essentially that 50% of our buildings have to have a front entrance facing the street, okay? That regulation came about, it was more of when we started getting more urban infill, and what we started getting was posted stamped-sized pieces of property, and all you could do was fit a, 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 a building with a side. And so, we started getting a bunch of stuff in the city where there was no front door on a posted-size, you know, small half-acre thing where there, where we were doing five units, right? And so, they wanted it to where there was functioning units. So a lot of times what we run into is, you know, when we back up buildings to the street and we have a back door, right? But all of these regulations, as they are written in the special development standards, all came from urban infill, urban sense, not suburban sense that we're talking about here. We're on the bypass. The closest building is 150 feet, and, you know, we're, we're jammed back behind this, behind this transmission easement. So here's just a picture of kind of what, this is the end unit of what it would look. There's a brick facade on the front with hardy board and, uh, board and batten. Where you're seeing the wrap is, is probably board and batten, uh, hardy board. And you can see the end units are single-story. When you get to the middle units, you can see that they pop up for the bedrooms up there. So you can see, this is not a flat-fronted architecture, okay? So when you, when you're looking at this, right, you can see where you walk into the front door. Immediately to your right is the dining room. So if we're forced to put a door on the side, we're going to have a door, our front door is going to be through our dining room instead of through our foyer in our current floor plan. Here's just another picture, kind of looking more face-on, but that's essentially the same architecture we were planning on using in this. architecture we were planning on using in this particular, for this particular case. So while we are going multi-unit, this is essentially, what we call this, is, this is, these are townhome units that are basically being sold as condos, right? This isn't a rental product, this is a sale product that they're planning on using. All right, so here's our site, here's East University. Our site's to the right of this picture, you can kind of see the transmission easements and stuff through there. You can see with our development next door, if I'm driving on East University and I want to rubberneck and see what's going on over there, okay? The first building is the same depth as that office building back there, right? So I'm not gonna be able to hardly see this first building from the street. Now, if I go a little bit further down the street, you know, I still have the grade of the parking lot blocking the view, but you can kind of see where the transmission easement's cut through here, and I got woods on one side and woods on the other, okay? Here's a view, this is where you would actually be able to see our building. Our building would be about halfway between the sign in the front back there and the, and the utility pole in the back back there. That wood line that starts right there, our first building is about forty feet behind that, okay? To give you a rough distance, okay? Again, this is from the street across the street, looking there, just giving you what's next door. All right, now I'm looking from where this building would be, looking at East University, right? So you can just see, if I'm walking out of my unit at grade here, I can't even see East University from there, okay? Here's just another picture. This is a picture of, this hundred-foot wide easement is maintained and manicured by Alabama Power, so this tree line is right on that hundred-foot mark, right? So our building is forty foot behind there. So, you know, we're gonna try and keep some of this vegetation that we can in front of this Building One, but we're also trying to keep the vegetation that you see here. Now, this vegetation you see here along the road is what we're trying to keep in front of Buildings Five and in front of Building Seven. So those are my pictures, just kind of giving you a sense of what you're seeing from the street, where the vegetation is, where our buildings are in comparison to that. So, you know, we would ask, right, while we do have this regulation, regulation's not a one-size-fits-all. I think in this particular case, because of our distance from the road, how far we're setback, we feel like the functioning entrance is really not applicable, that, not applicable to this particular specific development. So be happy to answer any questions if you have any. And I'll get back to what these things look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing. Anybody like to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Look for motion, questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know I ask you to offer comments all the time, I hope you don't mind, but, so, having listened to the different discussion that's taken place on this tonight, I would just offer one comment, which is that it's helped to guide you. If you agree with some of the information that Mr. Basquen mentioned today, that, you know, the end units and it'd be difficult to add doors on those facades, if that's your position tonight, then what you would want to do is modify the waivers as they've been presented in your report. In other words, you would be asked to approve a waiver to allow one building of, out of the seven that fronts on East University Drive as opposed to three out of four, it'd be one out of seven, right? Or, excuse me, three out of seven would be one out of seven. And then you would go ahead and you would grant the second waiver that would not require doors on Building One and Seven, I think it was.
Okay.
Just FYI. Thank you.
Okay, would you like to try on a motion?
Done every single one?
Well, keep going, you're better.
I would move to approve CU 2022-011, including both waivers. Is, right, is what?
That is my amendment.
So that's a motion. Okay, including both waivers.
And I second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
You know, I.
With this being that I might amend the motion.
Well, hang on a second, go ahead. Do you want to amend it? Or, go ahead, Joe.
Well, I mean, I, I, I understand the history that he discusses, but I also know that type of, that type of regulations in place, because even on major thoroughfares, looking at the side of a building or the back of the building is not very attractive. And trees can be cut down and all the other things. And so, I think the intent is to make sure that buildings that are facing thoroughfares have a front. And I understand this development is trying to fit in there, and, you know, they're trying to put as much in there as they can in order to, in order to make enough money to make a profit, and I'm all in favor of profit, but I also think there's regulations for a reason. And I think that, that I don't like looking at sides or backs of buildings when I'm on major thoroughfares. And I've seen a couple of different, different examples of that around Auburn, and every time I drive past it, I don't, I don't like it.
Well, if, you know, I don't disagree with him at all, except for the fact that in this particular location, because of the distance from the street, because that, that utility easement is forcing them to be backed from the street, and because of the type of structure that this is. Now, I guarantee you, I would not be supportive of this if this were two-story buildings that looked like a lot of other structures that we've got built here. This is a very residential-looking, as opposed to a multi-family, but that's the definition that you have to use. And, and because of the wetlands to the, to the east is also a mitigating circumstance. But yes, I agree with you, Bill. Under most circumstances, I would not be in favor of this, but because of this uniqueness here, I'm willing to, to grant the waivers personally. Okay, and then I just, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and I would also like to add to that, because I would like to actually amend the waivers to not require those front entrances on those other two buildings. One, because I don't think it enhances the design.
That's what the waivers are for, is to not require.
But do we need to remove?
Hold on, yeah, the waivers, as worded in staff's recommendation, are to approve a waiver number one, which would allow three of the seven buildings to face, basically, it's a small face on One and Seven, but to face the road. And then the second waiver requires that they put a functioning door on the end of Number One and Number Seven, Building Number One and Seven. So it doesn't waive the, the doors on those ends of units on the south facade.
So your amendment would.
So I think you're asking to not have them put the doors on the south facades.
So your amendment would say, remove the second waiver, right?
Wait, I don't understand, I'm sorry.
I want to make sure I made the correct motion.
I'm trying to clarify, I'm trying to clarify.
Your motion would require the end.
The ends of One and Seven to have doors.
Those then to have doors.
Yeah, the amendment, as I hear it, is to grant a waiver that says you do not have to have doors on the ends of Building One and Building Seven. Is that correct?
Is that right?
The waiver, let me just ask.
Well, the waiver with the removal of the staff.
The waiver as is. Yeah, I support the waivers as is, without the staff comments, or without the staff recommendations.
Oh, that's what you meant.
So the waivers as is, as requested by the applicant, I would like to include in the, in my motion to approve.
Thank you for clarifying.
So they give you back down to an amendment.
These no doors, that is exactly how they have it.
One point of clarification, I noticed that Building One is not setback, is not, doesn't have any of the, any of the concerns about wetlands or anything else. It is very close, close to the road as building any other building. Wouldn't we want, and plus it'd also be having backs then, or sides to two roads, the access road behind to Auburn Flats as well as frontage road on, on University.
Well, it is, he makes a good point in terms of, one of the advantages of the buildings to the east is, one is just a three-unit building, which means it's set back to midway of the, the building number five, I believe that's. And, but Building, Building Two, now Building One could be set back, it cost them a couple units, but it could be set back, which would be, the side of that building would be further away from, from East University and the same, or at least back to the same distance from the street as Building Five. It is, boy, they could do that.
My objection to, what I was kind of trying to say earlier was, there's, I don't think it enhances the functionality or the attractiveness of the development enough to require just simply two units to have those front, street-front-facing entrances. And also, I personally don't necessarily like that from a security standpoint either. I don't like the idea of those particular residents having to walk around to what basically would constitute the side of the building to gain entrance to their property. If you're gonna force a redesign, you're probably gonna lose the door on the front to make the space functional. So I would object to it, you know, as a woman, just from a security standpoint as well, to have that entrance moved away from the other entrances to the other units. So I think that, me personally, for those two reasons, I don't think that that required change is enough to warrant the redesign.
So are you proposing, proposing an amendment then?
No, I'm, I'm supporting her motion to, for the waivers.
With the clarification.
But I wanted to just get on the record why.
All right, so, help me with your security concerns. What were you talking about, the security concern?
Those two entrances will.
Meaning here and here?
On the, the One and Seven, those two front entrances of those end units will not.
Oh, okay.
Enter from the same vantage point as all of the other units in that building.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I see.
They'll have to go around to the side, but they'll park in the front and basically walk up the side of their building.
That's a valid point.
I don't know where that.
Which is much more secluded, because of the vegetation and the distance from the street and those other things than.
Well, I thought what you were talking about, what, what it was talking about, was the building number one is, is set right up to the, to the front, uh.
To the power.
To the power, power.
But that's still a good distance.
And it could be moved back, that could be adjusted.
Mm-hmm.
Likely not, just because of the setbacks, and the buildings do have to be fifteen feet apart.
Say that again?
The setback, the rear setback would have to be at least eighteen feet.
Oh, yeah, well.
And those two buildings will have to be fifteen feet apart.
The building could be made smaller. That's, that, that's, you know, if you want to require him to do that, he could be making smaller, but.
Could I comment on that? That looks like Building One on the west side, and Brett, if you disagree, let us know, but that building does not appear to be built up to the powerline easement. It's, I think Brett said it's quite a ways off, maybe forty feet. So what you have there is a swath of vegetation that's there today, as well as, you know, the greenery that goes down the private driveway along the west side. If it was possible for Brett, and he would know this, I would not, if it was possible for the applicant to preserve any vegetation within those areas, of course, that would help facilitate blocking the view of some of the things that you're talking about.
And I'm sure there'll be landscaping that goes in along the sides of those buildings as well by the developer, but.
Can I ask the staff a question? This may be academic, but why, what was the thinking of requiring, as far as the waivers, a functional interest, entrance? I mean, is the, do the ordinance not allow just a, like a fake facade, even though there was a joke about a mural? But I mean, just like a fake, a door that's not functional, what's the reason for?
Well, I think when you start to divide it up like that and say, well, we're just gonna put a, let's say, you put a garage door on the house and it doesn't go up and down, you know what I mean? That may be an extreme example, but, but things that are not functional and you don't use are not maintained well, and after a while, they don't hold up. But, you know, I think the intent was to have people coming and going and seeing that activity going in and out of a building and having that appearance architecturally from the front.
And I must admit that, that part of these requirements came about as a reaction to a noxious thing that was happening, where people were forcing a building on a site in a way that it was not architecturally, aesthetically at least, it looked a little odd.
It was an urban setting, and it was set right up to the street. I would feel differently about it, but because this, I'm looking at it from this particular design, so that's, that.
But people were putting back doors, backyard, back doors of buildings actually facing the main thoroughfare, and the cans and all that stuff. And so, we had to come with something that did that, and that cannot match all, all potential situations. And so, in this case, this one, to me, is enough different that I can, I can grant the waivers.
Okay, well, we're, we still have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I need clarification, if I could.
Clarification?
I do. So the motion is to approve it with the waivers as requested. Does that mean the motion does not include either of the staff conditions? And really, number one is just an administrative plat, which I think will take place no matter what. And so, that does not need to be a condition per se, but you also are not including number two, because that would be contrary to what I understand your motion to be. So just for the record.
Right.
I think it's for approval without either staff's conditions and granting the waivers as requested.
Which would mean requiring.
To allow the development as proposed.
Yes. So it's without conditions.
And I believe that is.
And with waivers as requested, yes.
Is that right?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, all right. Everybody clear on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, the next one is Auburn Hotel Conditional Use, CU 2022-012.
Yes. Conditional use approval for a commercial and entertainment use, a hotel located at 100 North Gay Street in the Urban Core Zoning District. Here's the aerial of the site. It's gonna be the northwest portion of the Auburn Bank redevelopment site. Down on the south portion of the property is the new Auburn Bank building, and to the west, or, excuse me, the northeast of that property is the new Auburn Burton Street parking Here is the ProxMap for the property. It is in close proximity to the C E O D, and then we've got U N E to the east. Here's the master development site plan. This is going to be phase two of the overall redevelopment of the Auburn Bank property. The first phase being the construction of the Auburn Bank headquarters and the construction of the new parking deck. The third phase is yet to be finalized. The site plan here will show that the hotel would have a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage along North Gay Street, and there's gonna be a full access drive just to the south of the proposed building here. In the Urban Core, structures are to be set back no further than ten feet from the property line, and this plan does show a setback exceeding that limit, but there is going to be additional right-of-way gained off of North Gay Street here in order to provide this on-street parking, which will place the building closer to the street, meeting that standard. And here we go with elevations for the property. This is going to be, if you're on Glen, Glen Avenue, facing the hotel, the front of the hotel will be on this side. This is the view from the south side of the property, from the Auburn Bank building, and the front's gonna be over here on the left. This will be the rear of the building. If you're on Burton Street, what you would see, the valet drop-off area would be over here in this area. And here's the view from the front of North Gay Street. There is a proposed coffee shop, I believe, over on the right side of the property. There's also going to be a restaurant and meeting space, as well as a lounge and rooftop restaurant. We have received two correspondents from adjoining property owners. Let me go back here. One of the adjoining property owners is just to the northeast. One of the adjoining property owners is just to the northeast of the subject property in the Allenwood Apartments. He did want me to voice that he expressed concern about the dumpster placement, but he was excited for the project. And I did correspond with the treasurer of the Magnolia East Townhomes on Burton Street. And he had general questions about the project, but did not express any formal opposition or support. With that, staff recommends forwarding the request to City Council with a recommendation for approval with conditions.
Just a question on that dumpster thing. What's in this particular zoning area? What's the requirements for covering that up?
It would have to be fully-
Like a wall?
Fully surrounded.
Is it a wall? Is it a fence? Is it a building?
And there would be cladding requirements, so brick, stone.
There would be masks somehow.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would a representative, is there one here to speak?
I'm sorry, no conditions.
No conditions.
No conditions.
Am I right?
Hi.
My name is Liz Bragg. I'm the civil engineer for this project. I'm with Goodwin Mills &amp; Kaywood out of Birmingham. I'm here to present the hotel on behalf of Auburn Bank, and I'm able to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, this requires a public hearing. Anybody like to come forward and speak on this item? Please do. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. The commission for questions of clarification or motion?
I move to approve CU 2022-012 Auburn Hotel to forward to City Council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a clarification, that the horizontal parking spaces on North Gate, are those spaces potentially dedicated to the hotel, or are they just public parking like the rest of the area?
They'll become public parking if they can shut them on the right-of-way.
They're public parking?
They will be.
Thanks. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay. Next one, number 10, conditional use North Ross Expansion, CU 2022-013, Mr. Foot. And Ms. Reese is going to recuse from this item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this request is for another conditional use. It is for North Ross Street expansion. At the location indicated on your aerial there, you've got, it shows trees, but there are not trees there today. That is an existing developed site that has a number of multifamily units that are placed on that strip of land. The applicant is proposing to incorporate the two sites to the bottom there as part of the development. And they will be developed in like manner to the other units that have been already developed in the north. They'll have access off of the rear, architecturally and functionally, they'll follow the theme and the trend that has been followed in the past. So basically, you have two single-family homes on those two lots today, and those will be demolished. And then they'll be replaced with four individual units that would be constructed on those two lots as they're incorporated. And there's a plan, I think, on the next sheet. There you go. So you can see the two new, or, excuse me, the four new homes, it shows relatively narrow, but they all fit on the two lots that are there today. And let's see, so there's four additional units, two that are removed. Staff's recommendation is for approval being forwarded to the City Council with, I believe there's just one condition of approval, and that is that the floor plans of each additional unit must be reviewed and deemed a multi-unit development and not configured in a manner more consistent with the private dormitory. So just something that, as time goes and we look at these different features that we don't have plans for today, to make sure that they do comply with our regulations. And that would be something that I would anticipate is looked at during DRT. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Is there a representative here who'd like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening. Parker Lewis with Hydro Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Chris Burtzong. He's also here. Be happy to answer any questions.
Good, sounds great. Thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing. Anybody like to come forward and speak on this item? Please do. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Looking for any questions or a motion?
I make a motion to forward the City Council recommendation for approval with all staff conditions, case CU 2022-013.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, let's see. Our last item of business is a street renaming. Ms. Shepherd, this is MS 2022-003.
Okay, no more conditional uses. A while ago, a property was annexed in on Lee Road 958 for Mr. Corbett. And whenever that happens, we change the street name from Lee Road 958 to a city street name. However, the unofficial name is Taylor Court, and the City of Auburn already has a Taylor Court. So this is to recommend the street be named Henry Farms. He would be the only one with his street name as Henry Farms unless the other properties annexed in. This won't affect any other properties on Lee Road 958 because they are not annexed in currently. So only his. And everyone on the street received a letter regardless of whether or not it would change their address.
Thank you. Is there a representative that cares to speak? Requires a public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this item? Please come forward. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Question, challenge, motion?
I move to approve name-changing, MS 2022-003.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
I'm here for the post office.
Any staff communications?
Not tonight, thank you, sir.
Okay, we are adjourned.